All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Plymouth School Committee. First order of business is please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up, I'll read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are meeting on the unceded ancestral homeland of indigenous people whose enduring presence we humbly recognize. We honor the Wampanoag people as the original stewards and the Herring Pond Wampanoag as a surviving tribe indigenous to these lands. In our commitment to lifelong learning, we acknowledge historical injustices to the native people of this land about to educate ourselves, our community, and our students on the first peoples and the hardships they endured. We offer this as a small but essential step towards building a culture of respect, truth, and accountability. All right. Next up, we have two moment, silence, moments of silence for two previous employees who recently passed. So first up, I'd like to honor the memory of Diana Allen Palladino, a beloved educator and community member who passed away peacefully on the 18th of October. Diana dedicated herself to education and to the children of Plymouth, both as a teacher of Spanish at PCIS in Plymouth South Middle and as a committed member of the Plymouth School Committee. Her warmth, generosity, and passion for nurturing young minds left a lasting impact on students, colleagues, and families alike. Beyond her professional life, Diana was a devoted wife, mother, and grandmother. She embraced life with style, creativity, and a deep love for family traditions that created joyful memories for those she cherished most. As we remember Diana's courageous spirit and her unwavering dedication to education and family, let us take a moment to reflect on the legacy she leaves behind, a legacy of kindness, commitment, and love. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor Diana Palladino's life and contributions to our community. Thank you for that. And next up, we want to honor, it takes time to remember and honor the life of Joseph Charles Joe Westfield, a cherished educator and beloved member of our community who passed away suddenly on the 17th of October. Joe dedicated over thirty years of his career to teaching at Plymouth South High School, inspiring generations of students in math, electronics, and computer science. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Joe is known for his genuine kindness, infectious zest of life, and deep commitment to family. He was a devoted husband, father, and grandfather who created lasting memories filled with love, laughter, and adventure. His passion extended beyond the classroom to his love of fishing, his lifelong friendships, and his welcoming spirit that made every community he was part of feel like family. As we remember Joe today, let us honor his legacy by reflecting on the impact he had on those around him as an educator, a mentor, and a friend to all who knew him. Please join me in a moment of silence to celebrate the lives, the life Thank you. All right. Does appear we have any one from the public question to speak tonight, so we'll move on to our student representative reports. First up from Plymouth North High School, we have Ann King.
Good evening, everybody. Many families in our community are currently facing food insecurity, and the Plymouth North High School Interact Club is beginning a food donation initiative to help. Students and staff are encouraged to bring non-perishable food items to student services. Every item helps support our own community members. Picture Day retake will take place on Wednesday, November 5th, and photographers will be at the school until 12:30. This past Saturday, the Student Council hosted their annual Fall Craft Fair. We had over 100 handmade crafters and about 2,000 community members attend to shop. Our Student Council members were a huge hit and did an amazing job running this event. On Monday, November 10th, Student Council, as well as the Social Studies Department, will honor members of the Plymouth community that have served in the armed forces by hosting our Veterans' Day Assembly. Plymouth North Coral, the Plymouth North Coral Concert is Thursday, November 20th at 7:00 PM in the Plymouth North Performing Arts Center. This concert is free entry. We encourage all, we encourage many to come and hear the North High School Chorus and Choir perform. The combined Plymouth North and Plymouth South marching band is going to be in the America's Hometown Thanksgiving Celebration Parade on Saturday, November 22nd. The marching band is also preparing for the Thanksgiving Game at Fenway Park. Students in art and the community participated in this year's Crossley Custom Cruiser Contest. The school was given a Crossley record player, and students were tasked with interpreting the theme band together. Each student submitted a design. Students voted, and the class wound up combining two designs. Students took turns working on the piece throughout class, and a written statement was submitted by Megan Hallman, which describes the overall vision. Voting takes, voting takes place on this week's, on, voting takes place this week on the Crossley website. Please help our submission by voting this week. The first quarter, grades closed on Friday, October 31st, and report cards will be distributed this Friday, November 7th. All parents and guardians should expect their student to return home from school with their report cards. Report cards are also available in Aspen. Meet the Coaches Night for Winter Athletics is being held on Monday, November 10th at 6:00 PM at Plymouth North. All student athletes and parents and guardians are highly encouraged to attend. A list of meeting locations can be found on the PNHS Athletics website. The annual Powder Puff Football Game is happening on Wednesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM at Plymouth North High School. Many of our Plymouth North students are looking for friendly competition and a big win during these fun events. Reminder that there is no school tomorrow, November 4th, and no school Tuesday, November 11th. The National Honor Society induction will be held Thursday, November 20th. The ceremony will be held in the Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. This year's PNHS and PSHS, sorry, this year Plymouth North High School and Plymouth South High School received an invitation to play at Fenway Park for the annual Thanksgiving Day Football Game. This will take place on Wednesday, November 26th at 4:30 PM. You can purchase tickets on the PNHS Athletic website or follow the links found on social media. Congratulations to all of our Eagle athletes as they continue to compete in the state tournament. Girls' soccer will travel to Concord-Garlisle on Thursday, November 6th for a game at 5:00 PM. Football will travel to Wellesley on Friday, November 7th for a 6:00 PM kickoff. Boys and girls cross country, for those that have qualified, will compete at divisionals on Saturday, November 8th. The dance team competes at States at Bill Raca High School on Sunday, November 23rd, and over this past weekend, they placed fourth at the Endicott Invitational in the Palm category. Cheer will compete at regionals in Marshfield on November 16th, and our Unified Basketball Team will host their annual jamboree at home on November 12th. Thank you.
Thanks. Lots going on at North. Thank you for that.
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have Shay Rose from Plymouth South.
Hi, everyone. So first, we want to say congratulations to the incredibly humble and unassuming Coach Stephanie Finn, who was inducted today into the Women's Hall of Fame for the new Agenda Northeast Women's Sports Organization. She is included with an elite group of women who have been leaders in Northeast promoting female athletes. As a varsity field hockey coach and softball coach for years at PSHS, we couldn't be more proud. Congratulations, Coach Finn. So tomorrow is the annual Mega Bowl for Unified Basketball versus Plymouth North High School at 3:00 PM at South. We encourage people to attend. It's an amazing event. Winter sports signups are Wednesday during K Block, and in addition, our Winter Sports Meet the Coaches Night is on Tuesday, November 18th. Congratulations to our graphics students who celebrated the fifth annual Horror Fest last week. It was a great event and very spooky. Panther TV was featured last night on the WCVB Wake-Up Call. Great job by all the students involved. The annual Advisory Pumpkin Decorating Contest was again a huge success at Plymouth South. Mr. Corsini's advisory won with their incredible depiction of a turkey Thanksgiving dinner. The junior class is working hard to get ready to prepare turkey baskets for needy families in our community. In addition, other spirit activities will be Powder Puff, and Spirit Week will be here very soon. The Theater Guild will be performing The Tragedy of Macbeth next weekend, Thursday through Saturday, at South, November 13th and 15th. Second quarter began today, and report cards will be sent home on Friday this week. The juniors in our biomedical program will be honored on Friday this week as they receive their white coats. We are very excited to celebrate them. Abigail Adams scholarships will receive their letter from DESE and be recognized by Dr. Campbell on November 12th. And finally, as a reminder, our student food bank has been refreshed with items and is available to students who need access. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Shay. Any questions for either of our representatives tonight?
No. I would, I would just make sure to kind of amplify the message about the Crossley contest that's going on for Plymouth North High School. It's really cool. Voting's open now. We're Region Five. Go out and vote for Plymouth North High School.
Yes.
Good reminder. Thank you. Great update, Shay. All right. Keep moving along. All right. Next up, we have our one and only program update for the night, so you had get all of our attention. Mr. Durkey, we have our facilities update.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, School Committee members, administration team, Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities. So we have quite a few slides tonight, but I'm going to be as quick as, as possible here. This outlines our, our team here in the office. We have a building use coordinator, administrative assistant, assistant director, and a director. Outside of, next slide. There we go. This is the most important slide you're going to see tonight. This is our 87-person team. This is how we solve the daily problems, requests that come to us every day here in the Plymouth Public Schools throughout the summer, throughout vacations. It's a 24/7 operation we run here. Our second shift custodians in the buildings every school night, making sure that it's ready for, for safe education the next day. We've got specialized employees where plumbing, electrical, HVAC, truck driving, carpentry, all of these individuals fall underneath the facility's purview, and we solve problems as they come to us. It also involves a lot of planning. So in light of time, I'm just going to read through these and then cycle through the rest of the slides. Please stop me if you have any specific questions that you want answers to. I try to create an overview of what we do here during the year, and it's planning, safety, employee support, the continuation of operations that goes into the 24/7 emergencies that they come. Maintaining working relationships across our town and state departments is massive. That allows us to grow our, our plans. It allows us to work safely and in compliance with state. Budget and purchasing, procurement. We also handle that in the office, working closely with the business office. Highlight here in the planning phase is, is an attention to our HVAC and heating concerns by setting up an annual boil, boiler maintenance preventative plan. We have been able to keep the heat on in the schools. Last year was our first year doing it. This is our first year with our state inspections where we had no major recommendations for our boilers. Some of these slides are a lot of pictures. They speak for, you know, make a picture is worth a thousand words. This is one of our larger, larger projects this past summer, $1.2 million parking lot sidewalk driveway replacement at Plymouth Community Intermediate School. We were lucky enough to partner up with a great contractor during this bitted project, and we accomplished this through the summer months, two months. While there was building operation, we still had the preschool going on during this time. And again, kudos to our staff and, and the contractor for maintaining a safe, clean site during this, this summer. Here's another view of the, this building, this paving project. You can see we have addition of bollards in the backside of PCIS to prevent any type of mistakes with vehicles coming towards the glass front of the cafeteria. This is also a wonderful addition to the exit of PCIS is it is a one-way kind of travel corridor through there. So having a two-lane turn to get onto Long Pond helps with efficiency and safety. Employee support, that's paramount. That goes in line with, with safety for us in our facilities office. We're there for, on a professional and a personal basis, open door policy. We work a lot, obviously working day-to-day with our operations, but we're always there because we're people, and people have issues too, not just facilities. So we're there to help support our employees as much as we can. Continuing of operations, the 24/7, also having, working with the business office and our wonderful administrative assistant Karen Shane in our office to make sure that we have purchase orders ready for all of our skilled craftsmen, for our contractors, so there's no delay in mitigating any issues we, we may come across. This is one of our projects here where we, South High School, we had to, we had a well go down on us during one of our evening events. We were able to respond right away and get the well back up and running within the hour. That was great thanks to our electrician Jimmy Daven and our assistant director Keith Malaguti. We discovered that the well needed to be replaced, the pump and motor, and without losing any type of operation in the school, we were able to replace one of the two wells in the south campus successfully. And in doing so, we have to work with state departments, Department of, Department of Environmental Protection, making sure that all the protocols are followed and making sure that they are kept abreast of everything that we're doing. Budgeting, purchasing, procurement, do a lot of that. Again, working with the business office. We're always trying to put forth a, a very specific budget that shows exactly where our money is going and showing evidence for the increases that we're asking for. At a glance, our operating budget last year was 1.584 million, and this year it is 1.852. Without facility salaries, salaries included in this, we're looking at about a dollar and eleven per square foot to maintain our facilities last year, and this year we're up to a dollar thirty per square foot. Here are some of our capital plans. Again, this is a great thanks to the school committee members here, our administrative team, the citizens of the, of the town of Plymouth, and the great folks over at the Town Hall helping us work through these capital plans, get these approved, and allotting the funds. This is West Elementary School, where we repaved the tennis court, playground area, and improved some sidewalks leading down to the ball fields. This is one of my personal favorite projects is bringing the Nathaniel Morton Elementary School back to its original state. So our intent here is to keep the, the old look of it, however, bringing it back up to modern amenities, which we're working on, but first and foremost, making it safe, replacing drywall ceilings, painting, replacing walls as needed. Here's another view of this. And in short, again, thank you to the school committee and our administrative team. Happy to take any questions.
Questions. Also, that was impressively quick, but I think we got the, we got the big picture. Questions, please. Yeah, Mrs. Marjorie Ellis.
Excellent. What do you attribute the cost per square footage going up?
The cost of square footage, so in, in that figure, that's how much the operating budget applies across the square footage of our facilities.
Right.
So a dollar, at a dollar thirty per square foot, that equates to our 1.852 million spread across 1.424 gross square feet.
Right. I'm saying, what do you attribute the increase, whereas a dollar eleven the prior fiscal year operating budget?
That was the increase in funding for the budget.
I think a lot of it has to do with, you've implemented a lot of contracts in regards to HVAC, trying to stay ahead of it so we're not necessarily falling behind. So there's been a lot of contracts that have been put in place as.
The boiler maintenance program is one of those that, that Adam is speaking to, whereas before it was, you know, problems were being fixed as they came to. Now we're looking at a more preventative maintenance measure.
So it wasn't, it wasn't an increase in cost for inefficiency. It was an increase in cost. And I'm just asking these questions because when someone sees the costs go up, they're going to say why. But it's actually an investment in future efficiency, is how you put it.
Correct.
Right. So I think, if you're going to pay a little more to take care of something that promotes longevity of your products and services and equipment, it's a smart investment.
That's, that is our goal here. Absolutely. And, and to that point, we're looking at, you saw a photo of the well project at South, the South Well Campus. You know, working through that issue, we identified some areas that we can improve upon. Just because it's the way it's always been done doesn't mean it's the right way. So we're in the process now of, of reworking plumbing in that pump house so that we have fail safes, we have a backstop if, in case, if, when the next emergency happens, that we can address it more efficiently. Thank you for your question.
Yeah. I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but yeah, I think it's almost more a question for us. I think it's a matter of us investing more and giving you more to spend. If we gave you a dollar fifty per square foot, you would figure out a way to invest that versus you, you know, saying costs are going up, it's more we've, you know, we increased your budget and the more, the, the more we increase your budget, the more you can invest in preventative maintenance.
Sure. It's, it's that old expression, smarter, not harder.
Yeah.
To your point, to both your points, Mrs. Marjorie Ellis and Mr. Pizzano, as you know, we've done a lot of presentations on the state of our facilities over the last few years, and we did a comprehensive facility assessment, which showed that we needed tens of millions of dollars of routine maintenance in order to avoid some very costly repairs. And I think we found ourselves in a situation not too long ago across the street in Nathaniel Morton where the roof was literally coming through the ceiling, and if we didn't have that emergency procurement, we'd be in a different situation. So I think Mr. Durkey's approach to really get our dollars to stretch further, whether it's the roofing projects that you've looked at and just the, like, stretching HVAC repairs across the district as opposed to just investing in one particular location so that we can really make sure that all of our facilities are well-maintained and prolong the life of, of everything. And a dollar, imagine taking care of your house for a dollar a square foot. Like, when you think about that, a dollar a square foot, so.
No kids lived there? Or pets?
Okay. So, you know, you get a one point, how many million square feet do we have, Mr. Durkey?
1.4.
1.4 million square feet of building, and we were budgeting a dollar eleven a square foot. So a dollar thirty, it's, to your point, it's up, but that's, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive.
And in addition to the 323.22 acres.
Yes.
Circle ball fields are expensive too. To Dr. Campbell's point, and he, he's given us his goal of a 5% energy savings this year, and that's something that we're working very hard with. A lot of our high costs do come to HVAC-related issues, controls. There's a lot that we can do with controls, so we're always working very hard to improve upon protocols we already have, institute new ones, always with the, the taxpayer in mind. We understand that these taxes that, these, these funds that come to us, they don't come easily, and we want to spend them the, the most efficient, the most responsible way that we can. And to save, spend that money now to save that money in the future. And we're looking at that very closely with HVAC controls right now.
Yeah. It's good logic because prices aren't coming down, and I think the longer you wait to fix something, I've seen it in other districts. I mean, we're not talking just of slight increase, things can double. All right. So, thanks.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for a very concise presentation. I would definitely agree with you in regards to slide two being your most important slide. I really appreciate you amplifying all of your staff and being able to see, I think a lot of people within the district have the perception that facilities is just a portion of what they may see during the daytime or, you know, custodial efforts before, during, and after school. But being able to see from a district perspective, how many of your staff, you know, have enhanced skills to be able to proactively fix or be able to react to something that would cost a lot more money if we were calling people in. But also the fact that you really shared those partnerships that you rely on to help make things work so efficiently. So thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to say the greatest skill of the facilities employees is they care.
Absolutely.
That really is, you, you can't, you can't teach that. You can't learn that. So we're very fortunate to the, the 87 employees that we have, the facilities, facility employees that we have in this district, that they genuinely care.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate the update.
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Dr. Campbell, your superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. A few things. One, I just want to, first of all, thank you to Dr. Rogers and Dr. White. I'm very excited to, I'm, you know what I'm going to talk about, because I'm so excited about this. So for the last couple of years, we've really been trying to work on our volunteer program here in the district. We were able to receive a grant last year, had some training with FALM's VIP Program and Mass Service Alliance, really to kind of set the stage for what a comprehensive volunteer program could be. We've been doing some internal planning. Last week, Dr. White and Dr. Rogers went to the Center for Active Living, been working directly with, with their staff over there. And I think we've walked away with nearly 50 interested volunteers already to start this program. And we're also sort of tapped the shoulders of a very, I think, influential person who happens to be on the PTA that will help support and champion that work. So really excited about that. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to say that you'll be hearing more about this. I think we're going to have some volunteers by the turn of the year in, in the schools and, and really the start of something that could be quite special here in Plymouth. So again, thank you to Dr. Rogers and Dr. White for their support on that. We had a preschool planning committee meeting. As you all know, we're meeting every other month. We had our first full meeting last Thursday, I believe it was, discussed a lot of the work that's already been done. Mr. Turkey was at that as well. You know, we've already put in a new playground structure. We have fencing that was put in, additional storage cabinets, a lot of things that have already been done, punch list of items that we're prioritizing to work on in, in the process of discussing collaborations with CCTV and the visual and performing arts too. So some great progress. Our next meeting will be in December, but we're moving along quite nicely there. And the last thing that I just, no, not the last thing, but the second to last thing, excuse me. With the SNAP benefits, the disruption to SNAP benefits, the ending of SNAP benefits, we know that this is a big challenge to many families within our community and wanted to remind our community that, that we have free breakfast and free lunch for all that are interested. I did send out a communication last week as the weekend was, was coming upon us and SNAP benefits were ending, not only highlighting that, but also resources that are local. Today, we also sent out another communication regarding sort of other expanded resources beyond the food assistance that are available. We'll continue to do that. We will also, we have, we're, students are off tomorrow, and apologies to the parents who don't have school tomorrow, but we have a full day of professional development, and we're doing a food drive there as well, which is, which is great. So we're going to do everything we can to try to help our community. Our, I think our food banks are also in desperate need. You heard our student reps talking about that this evening. It's great that, you know, the power of the students, I think, in, in being involved in that. We have a lot of needy, a lot of need in this community, whether it's food insecurity or otherwise. And there is a disruption, and we're trying to help on. or otherwise, and there is a disruption, and we're trying to help on the best way we can. I also met with the Y Executive Director today, and they're doing a lot of things to try to help too. But just, I would say to anyone who is, you know, listening or just reads the communication, please reach out to our schools, and, you know, we'll try to make the best connection we can to support families that need help. And just lastly, another thing that was mentioned, I believe by Anna, could have been Shailene though, the Mega Bowl. If you have an opportunity to go to the Mega Bowl on Wednesday at 3:00 at South High School, our Unified Basketball Teams will compete. It is probably one of my favorite events to go to every year. It will bring a smile to your face. The crowd will be loud and rowdy and just full of spirit, and it's a great day. So if you can get there again, it's Wednesday at 3:00 if you happen to have time in your schedules, and it's at South High School. And that's all I have this evening. Mr. Pizzano.
All right, thank you, Dr. Campbell. Do you have any questions, Dr. Campbell? Ms. Bryant?
Just thinking in regards to the SNAP benefit, is there an opportunity that we can maybe look at baseline data pre-benefit shut-off, look through, you know, week by week to be able to see if there's utilization of more breakfasts or lunches in particular schools?
Certainly. Yep, that's targeted. Yep, that's a great suggestion, but we can definitely do that with our food service director. Yep.
Any other questions? I had one question regarding, and you said more is coming, but on the volunteer initiative, and if you don't know this yet, that's fine, but is this, will the, I know you're targeting the senior center, but will the general public be able to get involved? Because I have had people ask me, like, you know, whether it's...
Absolutely. So we're trying to, we had a very interested audience, so we're trying to match the needs in the schools and the desires of the community. So as I said, Dr. Rogers had a meeting with the coordinator over at the Calend. There's a desire there, so started there, orientation, sort of, this is what we're trying to get off, get started. We're also going to have a meeting at the Pine Hills in the community center, so it's, and then we'll be doing the general public. So we're trying to go slow to go fast, but this will be open, this will be open to the general public.
Eventually, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, if somebody asks, I'm trying to figure out where to route them.
Yep, and I would suggest if there, if there's someone who, if they have children and they want to be in the schools, they could go directly to the school right away, but there'll be more guidance in terms of like the opportunities that we're trying to match, and we'll be doing communications out to the general public on that as well.
Great. Thank you. All right. If no other questions, we will move on to committee member reports. Does anybody have anything they want to update the committee on? All right. Another thing I have, as I did attend the preschool meeting, as Dr. Campbell alluded to on Thursday, just for a couple of things I'll point out that, Dr. Campbell, for the committee's awareness, just, you know, a lot of work has occurred, and I would say overall, things are, I would say, things are well on track. The biggest design challenge that I heard from, came up from the meeting was just working on developing a safe and arrival and dismissal area and plan. I think we kind of expected that. The other thing that was nice too is the administration's also using this as an opportunity to make some light improvements at PCIS, so it's not just about building the new school at Plymouth South, but also taking that opportunity to refresh things at the location of PCIS. And one really nice thing too is the collaboration with CCTE Program to help have some of those students help with construction installation work, and then with the VPA to have students at both middle schools work on murals and stuff by the art students. So like I said, lots of activity going on, but definitely, definitely got the feeling that things were on the right track. So, all right. Does anybody else have anything they want to report on? Nope. All right. Anything for Master Planning Committee this month? Mr. Campbell, or Mr. Morgan?
Yes, we did meet last week. We went with a consultant going over the, finalizing the information that's going to go into our report. There is going to take longer than the consultant anticipates, so we're looking at probably the final report sometime January. There will be one more public forum workshop in January, and then the report should be coming out shortly after that. So things are progressing. It's delayed a little bit, but it's going to be a pretty comprehensive report. So again, that'll probably be first quarter next year.
Thanks. All right. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Plymouth Building Committee has not met since our last meeting, so we'll roll that to the next agenda. And next up, we have personnel reports. Mr. Chovey.
Yes, good evening. I can just share with you that we did accept three resignations and approved four medical leaves.
All right. All right, next up, any unfinished business anyone wants to bring up? All right, any new business for future discussion? Nope, cruising along. All right, approval and consent agenda. Today, we just have two items, an accounts payable warrant and some equipment disposal. Any questions or anything needs to be pulled? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion. Question, no accept.
Second.
Second, all right. And we can vote. Back to our agenda. All right, that passing, we have no items pulled from the consent agenda. All right, with that, our next and final order of business actually tonight is an executive, executive session. If I can get a motion to enter that executive session.
A motion, we enter executive session.
For the purposes of?
For the purposes of school safety.
All right. We have a motion. All right, Ms. Smardjalus, seconds. All right, I will take real call vote on that. Mr. Smardjalus?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, we are now in executive session as of 7:36 PM.